We will reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, December 10, 2019. Do we have anything to report out?
None to none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. In which case, we'll adjourn the special meeting and convene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council and joint city council successor agency, public financing authority, Folsom South of Highway 50 parking authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority, a special meeting. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And if you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any agenda update, Mr. City Attorney?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There are updates to the staff report for Item 6D, 8A, 8B, 8C, and 7A on the agenda, a copy of which have been provided to you previously, and they are also available on the table in the back.
Okay, thank you. And we have one, our next item is business from the floor, which is anything that anybody wants to bring up to us that is not on the agenda. And I have a card from Michelle Gibson about traffic enforcement. You want to come on up? That is not something that is specifically on the agenda, so.
Hello.
I'm sorry, Michelle, before you start, I'm just going to remind everybody, if you've got, I heard something ringing back there somewhere. If we have to turn our volume down, so do you, please, on your phones. Thanks.
So there's been a lot of discussion about the traffic in the area and enforcement and/or perhaps lack thereof. And it's my understanding that the city doesn't consider traffic enforcement to be a big concern because of the revenue in which that they receive. A lot of that goes to the County of Sacramento to fight tickets, court costs, that type of thing. So my understanding is the squeaky wheel gets the grease. But with all of the construction that's being made here locally, it doesn't seem that the presence is what we need for enforcement of traffic. And it seems as if it is more of, and this is people that I know that work with the city, that is more of a revenue concern and not an enforcement concern. So there's been a lot of discussion in the Internet with Facebook and some of the different avenues. And I think it's a consensus that people realize that there's not the enforcement, so they do whatever they want to do because nobody's going to bust them for it. So.
Michelle, if I could, I'm the city manager. Your name's Michelle, right?
Mm-hmm.
Our police chief is actually right back there by those double doors, and I could ask you to connect with him, and he can talk to you about what we do in terms of traffic enforcement, so you can understand kind of the actions we take.
I've left messages and never get a response back.
Okay, well, the chief's right there, and I know he would be delighted to speak with you, so why don't you take some time in the hallway and just learn a little bit more about what we do in terms of enforcement, because we do a lot.
Yeah, it's interesting when you talk to people, you don't see it.
I think the people that all got stopped on Oak Avenue last week would probably disagree with you.
Well, good, that's great.
So.
We've been taking on some.
My only other warning is, just because you saw it on Facebook doesn't mean it's true.
No, but I've lived here for years, and truthfully, it's, I just, I don't see the presence, rarely. And a lot of people feel that way. You know, what's going to happen when, if there's no, you know, red light cameras, if there's, I mean, what's the plans for the future? Is it just do as we're doing?
And that's honestly, because this is not an agenda item, that's not a question that we can answer. But I think that Chief Hillman might be able to fill in several blanks for you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. And we don't have any other requests to speak in business from the floor, so we will move to the consent calendar. Is there anybody that would like to pull anything?
I'd like to pull Item D like David.
Okay.
I'll pull Item B.
I'm sorry, was that B or D, Roger?
Item B.
Okay. So, and I'm going to pull G and I, so do we have a motion for the remainder of the consent calendar?
I'll move to adopt Item A, C, E, F, H, J, K, L, M, and N.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Okay, whoever pulled B, Roger?
I don't know who would I address questions to for Item B?
Public Works.
Who was, what was the criteria for the actual surveying? Like, what are they, what are they, what are they looking for? It didn't really say anything in there.
For the, for that.
Yeah, for the Kim Lee Horn Associates, the intersection control evaluation.
Mark will get into specifics of that.
Are you asking what was in the request for proposal?
Like, what's the survey, what are they conducting, what are they looking for? There's no, like, there's nothing in there as far as meat on, it just says that we're paying for a survey to be conducted, right? Or a study to be conducted?
If I may interject real quick, Councilmember Gaylord, there's a reason why this staff report is written in such a way as was the resolution, but Mark can't address. Allow me just preface their reasons why.
Yeah, Councilman Gaylord, the intersections in question are intersections that have been on our analysis radar, some of them for several years, you know, either, either things that the public has brought to our attention and asked, you know, why don't you have a traffic signal or a stop sign or roundabout at a given intersection? And others have come to our attention more recently, and so we decided it was time to do a comprehensive analysis of all of the intersections using the same analysis methodology and coming up with a determination of which intersections need a change in traffic control or do not, and then ranking them in order of priority so that we can then establish a capital improvement program moving forward.
So I'm excited about the whole process, and I'm forward, I'm just curious what's in it. So we're being asked to spend $66,000 on this study, but what's the, are there any details to provide, is all I was wondering?
Generally speaking, it's an analysis of what current and projected traffic volumes will be at each intersection, looking at what the existing geometric conditions of each intersection are in terms of the numbers of lanes, site distance, approach speeds, you know, the typical things that we normally look at when we're trying to decide whether an intersection needs some form of traffic control. And then the consultant will conduct the analysis using each of the different types of potential traffic control measures, starting with stop signs, roundabouts, working your way up towards the more costly improvements, and then figuring out which is the most appropriate for that intersection under existing and future conditions.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
I'll move 10-360.
I'll second.
Except that's 10-360. Okay, sorry, I was looking at the next one. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Mr. Kozlowski.
Yeah, for Item D, I have three questions, I guess. The increase in the park maintenance contract that's proposed, I guess the simple question is, the interviews with the prospective contractors happened a year ago by the, what's in this report? Why the long lag time until today?
Good evening, Lorraine Pagioni, Parks and Recreation Department. What happened was, we got the cost estimates right before the budget process for last year, brought everything, all the increases through the budget process. Some were approved, some were denied. So what we did in the meantime is work on a negotiated contract, so to speak, to see if we could reach an agreement of where we could actually afford the increases and where we could not. So we were on a month-to-month until this time.
Gotcha. Okay, all right. And then the staff report indicates that part of the process of trying to get this contract together was sort of right sizing the services, which maybe we're lacking a little bit previously, or not, was enough time devoted to some of the activities. The contract, though, represents almost a 60% increase in what we were paying previously. How much of that would you attribute to changing the scope of work versus just escalation of cost?
There's actually a few factors. One of the things that we wanted to also do in this new contract was to repackage how we were having irrigation repaired in the lighting and landscape districts. Before, what we would do is we would have it done under unscheduled. So they would send out, when we had an irrigation repair, we'd send out, let the contractor know, they'd go buy the parts and the pieces, they'd send their technician out and repair it. What we wanted to do different here, because we could save about 30%, is we would buy the parts, and we would just buy the staff person's time. So we've translated the staff time that we were paying under unscheduled over into the scheduled. So while this is going up a little bit on the scheduled, we're going to see a decrease on the unscheduled because most of our unscheduled work is irrigation repair.
Gotcha. So of that 60% increase, then, in this case, how much of it was that previously separate?
Probably a half.
Half of that, okay.
Half of that. The other translates into staffing, which you might be getting to on the trails, but.
Actually, no. The only other question I have is not really a question, it's more just a general comment. A lot of the services that we've received from outside and our own costs have escalated quite a lot in the last, you know, several years. And this one's an example where we've got, you know, we're going from, you know, $90,000 a month to $145,000 a month. The comment is that the bids that we received were spread pretty wide apart. And being involved in construction projects, at least in some bidding in the past, that sometimes indicates that the scope of work is not super clear. Sometimes means that maybe not enough time was allowed for the contractors to give good pricing. And I just, the two that were, you know, the one that you negotiated with, obviously, was the low bidder. The others were so much higher that it's a little, makes me a little nervous about the results that we're getting from bidders.
Well, this is, this is the RFP and the RFQ, very detailed, plenty of time. We weren't in a rush, we knew we had plenty of time to work with the contractors who were interested. I think it might, you know, while I can't speak to exactly what their strategy was in pricing this out, I do know that both of those other companies haven't worked with us before. And so, once you understand the economy of scales that you can get by having, doing maintenance in the city, you're right next to a park, you're right next to a lighting landscape district, and you're right next to a trail, there's a huge amount of economy of scale that can be leveraged without sacrificing the end product. And I suspect that TerraCare, having already been under contract for us, had an advantage there.
Gotcha. Okay. That was it, those were my questions, thank you. I'll move Item 10-365.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And I just have a, this is really a clarification on G, which is Resolution 10368. On its survey 40, Folsom Auburn, Greenback to Oak Avenue, existing speeds are 40 to 50, 85th percentile is 51, recommended speed limit is 50, and then changes to existing, it says zero. Shouldn't that actually be zero to 10 if that whole stretch is going up to 50, where some of it is now 40?
Our intention is to leave the short section from Old Oak to Greenback Lane as a 40 mile an hour zone due to the driveway density.
I agree completely, but it just, it wasn't clear from this.
I see.
That, and you have that extra column that says changes to existing, and it said zero, so. Okay, with that, I'll move the resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And then my question on Item I, 10370, with regard to the $108,642 that has to be appropriated for the Transportation Impact Fees Fund, is the council going to have to take action on that, and when is that expected to happen, to appropriate that other $108,000?
That is part of the resolution.
Okay, so it's done in here?
Yes.
Okay, with that, I'll move that item as well.
Second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Aquino.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. So that moves us to Item 7. The public hearing regarding proposed increases to water, wastewater, and solid waste rates and fees.
So if I could, Mayor, for this item, I just wanted to open the item with a few remarks about the public outreach that has led to today's public hearing on proposed utility rate increases. And Mr. Yasutaki is going to bring up just a five-minute PowerPoint just to let you know kind of what we've done to spread the word. We work very hard to reach those affected by these potential rate increases in many ways, using many different mediums. If you're an avid social media user, we wanted to reach you there. If you prefer email, we wanted to be in your inbox. If you like the World Wide Web, we wanted you to be able to click and find relevant information very quickly. If you despise technology, we wanted to be in your US Mail postbox. And if you're more of a people person, we wanted to provide in-person information sessions for you. So by our count, the proposed rate increases and related issues have been discussed and vetted at at least 16 public meetings over the last two and a half years. And of course, tonight, we're having a public hearing, which brings us to a grand total of 17. We mailed our Proposition 218 mailer, and there's a picture of the front cover there, to all Folsom utility rate customers in mid-October. We took the extra step, which is actually not required by law, of including, rather than just describing, a protest form in the mailer in case recipients wish to submit a protest to any or all of the proposed rates. We put together a website solely devoted to the proposed rate increases and advertised the link as broadly as possible. We sought to distill the complex information down into something more relatable and meaningful, so we developed a comprehensive Q and A document that we constantly updated based on feedback and questions that were coming into City Hall. And then we pushed the link out to that Q and A onto social media. We are one of a precious minority of cities that still mail a hard copy newsletter to their residents, so articles about the proposed increases appeared in two of our newsletters over the last few months, reaching over 29,000 households and businesses. In addition to our hard copy newsletter, we also blast out weekly e-newsletters by emails, and articles about the proposed rate increases appeared in nine e-blasts, reaching over 8,000, the 8,000 people on our email distribution list. We posted at least eight Facebook and Twitter posts on this topic, resulting in close to 23,000 impressions. We also posted three Nextdoor posts, resulting in over 9,600, close to 9,600 impressions. And I did my very first yikes Facebook Live, and I devoted a great portion of that to the proposed utility rate increases. An advertisement about where to find out more about the proposed rate increases appeared on Metro Cable Television Channel 14. I know all of you watch that all of the time, I'm sure. We hosted a community open house with me and relevant department heads and managers delivering a prepared presentation, and then, more importantly, taking any questions from the audience. We videotaped that meeting, and we posted the video to our website. Our utility customers also received a message about the public workshop and their bills that you'll see there under Special Messages. We placed four ads in the local Folsom Telegraph, and I also featured this subject in my November monthly column in the newspaper, and the circulation of the Folsom Telegraph is over 22,000. And in addition to having a dedicated webpage on the issue, we also promoted the issue on our homepage of our website and also in our website's newsroom. And finally, if you had nothing else to do in life, you could stand in our lobby and watch information about this issue slide by on our digital message board. And you could, of course, always pick up copies of the mailer at our public counters. With that, unless anyone has any questions about public outreach, I will now turn it over to Environmental and Water Resources Director Marcus Yasutaki. Both Marcus and Public Works Director Dave Nugent have pretty short, concise presentations tonight because we really have the desire to leave the bulk of the time for questions from the council and, of course, the public. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Elaine. Mayor Howell, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, Environmental and Water Resources Director. As Elaine said, I have just a quick presentation that will cover the water and wastewater portion of the proposed rate increase. Dave Nugent, Public Works Director, will cover the solid waste portion. This is a brief summary of the prior two meetings we have held here at City Council, as well as the public open house workshop we had in November. So purpose of this presentation, really for key items, is to review the rate study goals and objectives, an overview, a quick overview of the setting of cost-based rates, what we have to do in each utility to identify the revenues and expenses, and how we come up with a rate for given customer bases. In this particular presentation, obviously, review the water and wastewater rate study results. And then, if there is any feedback later on in the evening, gain that feedback from the public. Goals and objectives, obviously, set the rates where operating and capital expenses match revenues received from customers. And this provides a couple of things, funding for our operations and maintenance, and funding for capital replacement. There is another item included in operations and maintenance, which is debt service, and we do have that on the water side, not on the wastewater side. So we do have to repay bonds and loans for the city. And again, it's only on the water side, but that's included in a roll-up of O and M. Now, obviously, we want to maintain adequate reserves in each one of our utility funds. On the water side, this was critical when we were in mandatory water use reductions by the state in 2014, 2015, and a part of 2016. So this did help provide a reserve for under, basically, receiving less revenues than what we had, would have otherwise collected if we were not required to reduce our water use as a city. And so the target for water and wastewater is 40% of O and M, capital improvement from rates, and in this case, for water debt service. And then, the cost allocation is what water and wastewater, and then, obviously, solid waste pay to other support here at the city. So City Manager's Office, Finance, et cetera, those offices that provide support for our operations on a daily and annual basis. And really important, complying with Proposition 218. So just a quick overview of setting cost-based rates. One, we look at the revenue requirements for each one of our utilities, and a lot of this is the same between water, wastewater, and solid waste. We just fund different items. Obviously, vehicles in solid waste are a little different than the vehicles and equipment that we have in water and wastewater, but all that's included. Developing a cost of service, and so we take what our revenue requirements are, and we need to identify how we equally distribute those costs to each one of our customers. So between the residential and the non-residential categories, we cannot, you know, charge more to one customer base than the other. That is not in compliance with Proposition 218, so we need to do a cost-of-service analysis for each of our customer bases, and then develop the rate design. So once we're able to identify what the costs are associated for each one of our customer categories, then we are able to identify what the specific rate or rate base is for those customer classes. So those, that's kind of the way the information rolls into the numbers that were in the notice and what we presented at various meetings. Rate adjustments, at least on the water side, include current and future staffing levels, memorandum of understanding, salary adjustments, obviously, just increased utility costs between 2008 on the wastewater side, 2011, 2012 on the water side. Public Works has, I think back to 2004, 2004 for these adjustments as well. Pers adjustments, vehicle replacement. As I mentioned, they do differ between water, wastewater, and solid waste, but we all have vehicle replacement that we need to keep up with. And then, in particular, on the water side, water meter and meter-reading equipment replacement fund. We know that at some point in time, we will have to replace a certain amount of water meters throughout the city. We have some that were installed as long as 1991, and those, over time, will have to be replaced. And we want to ensure that we have a fund available to make that reinvestment and not have to, so we can continue on a pay-as-we-go as opposed to issuing new debt to cover that. Debt service, again, only on the water side, and then capital reinvestment. So that's pumps, pipelines, tanks, in the case of water, and so replacing that infrastructure as needed. And then, I do want to be clear that the rate adjustments do not include any water supply or water infrastructure for any of the developments south of Highway 50. There's a separate funding for that, which includes particular agreements in their financing plans and CFDs that are associated with those projects. And I do have later on this particular presentation a specific surcharge for the customers, or future customers, south of Highway 50, which covers the costs of the actual water supply itself. So just a quick summary of the water revenue requirement, we went over this a couple of months ago, but this yellow line just shows the trend of what the present rates would fund moving forward. And as you can see, in the first couple of years, we'd be able to cover O and M and debt service, but we get out into the, you know, years three, like, three through six in this case, and we would not be able to cover debt service, which, in this case, would only cover operations and maintenance. So that is the trend of current rate structure. So what we're trying to do, obviously, is then be able to cover the debt service and capital reinvestment. The revenue requirements, so this and the detailed report that's available online show that water rate adjustments are, one, necessary. It reflects the need to fund water O and M, which includes debt service expenses, obviously, fund adequately annually renewal and replacement projects, so our infrastructure or capital improvement program, and then meeting our reserve targets necessary, or that are identified at that 40% mark. This is just a quick summary on the residential side of what current and proposed rates look like. This is information that was provided a couple of months ago, as well as in the mailer. This is the non-residential document here, which identifies fixed charges and commodity charges based on the meter size. Here is a comparison, and this is a residential comparison only. We did not include non-residential because that would be a much larger graph and chart, so we just included the residential with an average water bill, or monthly water use of 16 CCF. You can see where the city is currently, and then where the city will be after the proposed rate adjustment. If we looked at just a CPI index, and you just took $32.28 from 2011 until 2019, we'd be at $45.16. So we still are less than CPI, as well as less than the regional average. Wastewater, same thing. The only difference here is we don't have debt service that we need to cover here. So you can see, we run into a very similar problem in 2023, and that would be only funding our O and M and not having the capability to fund any capital reinvestment at the current or present rate structure. Same items that we saw in the water slides, so I won't necessarily repeat all of these. These are the proposed residential wastewater rates, the current shown on the far left, and then what we're proposing for through July 1, 2024. This is a non-residential slide, and I do, I will point out two things on the next slide here that are different than what was in the mailer. that are different than what was in the mailer. This item here for parks, in the mailer, it had per 1,000 square feet, but we're changing it to a per fixture unit, which matches our regional sand or regional sands nomenclature for parks. So, we're consistent with information that our revenue division's currently collecting and putting into the system for confirmation and, you know, any audits that we have to do with regional sand to make sure that the customer billing base for regional sand matches what is actually here in the city.
For the people that are sitting here tonight and those that are watching it on TV or online, regional sand is Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District. That is the portion of the bill that goes directly for operation of the wastewater treatment plant and the transmission, large diameter transmission lines that take the wastewater to the wastewater treatment plant, which is basically in Elk Grove.
Thank you, Mayor Howell. And then, the other item I do want to point out, and this was correct in the staff report. That's why you don't see this in the staff report. But I am pointing it out because it is different for those that have the mailer in hand. This item here for colleges was incorrect in the staff report and in the mailer. So, I do want to point this out as well, is, I believe it had $2.46 or $2.64, and I think $3.05 out here, which was incorrect. So, we've corrected those numbers, which are less than the numbers in the mailer. So, city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but there aren't any, there isn't anything else we have to do in terms of a new notice or anything like that because the number is lower than what was published in the Prop 218 notice. So, I just wanted to point those out. One is in the staff report, and the other, obviously, is just reference to the mailer, but corrected in the staff report. So, again, here's another survey on wastewater. You can see here is where the city is currently and where we will be if the rate adjustments are approved. Again, we did a CPI reference, a little under $64 relative to 2008 to 2019. And as you can see here, about $4 higher than the regional average, but fairly consistent with our neighbors that also flow into regional sand. So, south of 50, this is the surcharge I was mentioning earlier in reference to the water supply. It's very similar to the east area surcharge the city has in Empire Ranch, parts of Broadstone, and the Parkway. And this is fundamentally to pay for the water supply that is serving that particular area. So, in this case, the amount that the water costs for 5,000 acre feet is about 1.78 million. That then is distributed between the residential and the non-residential customers that will be south of 50. So, on the residential side, it comes out to about $9.20 a month. On the non-residential side, it's on a per CCF basis, which is about 85 cents per CCF. So, although the numbers aren't the same, it's the very similar criteria that was used for the east area surcharge.
And again, just to be, just to be really clear that these are only charged to the customers south of 50.
Correct.
Just to back up to the previous slide, that Golden State contract, we were, the city of Folsom was paying for that all along. That cost is now being shifted to the residents south of the freeway, correct?
That is correct. So, a couple of years ago, when the water supply agreement was approved, during that time, the east area was paying a surcharge, I think, of about $12 on the residential side.
Actually, I think it was more than that. I want to say it was closer to 20.
And so, there was a surcharge that the east area was paying. And then, when the water supply agreement was approved, that cost or a portion of that cost, so the 1.78 million was shifted from the residents and customers within the east area to the plan area. So, at that time, I think it might have been 2015.
We reduced the east area's surcharge.
From 12 to a little over $4. I think it's $4.28, I believe, on the residential side. And so, yes, now this cost that was being borne by those customers south of the, or north of the freeway are now being covered by those customers south of the freeway. So, with that, that is all I have for water and wastewater.
Any questions? None? Okay. Solid waste, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Dave Nugent, Public Works Director. As Marcus said, a lot of the 218 notifications and the process are very similar with solid waste. So, I'm not going to get back into that and rehash all that. For solid waste, excuse me, we started off in early 2018 with an operational analysis to really dig into what we're doing, how we can better make some efficiencies and really look holistically at the services we provide. We, at that time, it was decided to look at the bundled rates and keep them the same, all the things that we currently provide. That's what we analyzed. We didn't want to look at starting to piecemeal what we were providing for our services, which includes the second green waste, the recycle cans, the bulky waste pickup, and the door-to-door household hazardous waste. It also includes a seven-day commercial service. And again, these services that we looked at are for north of 50 only. There is no south of 50 component into our analysis. From that point, we looked at, again, making sure that our revenues match our expenditures and developed a rate model. And we brought those to you in the past, and I'll touch on those in a little bit. The biggest thing that we realized throughout all of our analysis are the state unfunded mandates. This is a listing of them. We discussed these a number of times. And the last one on there, the SB 1383, I presented a kind of what's coming down the turnpike at us. And this does not include those costs. We do include some staffing costs in these rates to anticipate what we will need to do in the way of program management and outreach in light of what's coming as far as the organics recycling program for residential. But we simply don't know the fixed costs, the operational costs. We don't know, the state has not told us how we're to operate. And so, we can't include those costs yet. So, we can't even forecast them under Prop 218. So, we're at the point where, I said last time, we will most likely be back in front of you if those costs are extreme and we can't absorb them in our current structure. But currently, we did not include a lot of those costs. As we spoke before, some of the major drivers, the recycling crash back in, it seems a long time ago, it was only last year, early 2018. The bottom of the slide there is the big key. We went from a $465,000 a year revenue stream to offset our operational cost to a $671,000 expense. That's over a $1.1 million swing in our revenue stream. So, we've mentioned this before, our rates have not increased since 2004. This is a simple graph showing our current rate and the CPI. If we were to follow the Consumer Price Index from 2004 to current, our current rates would be approximately $45.53 for the 64-gallon container. Comparison-wise, this is how Folsom compares in the region for our neighbors. One update since our last briefing with you. I've highlighted Sacramento there. They've recently updated their rates. I believe last week, they adopted their rate increases, and they have dropped, or they have jumped another $6 over the next two years.
And just for clarification, that's the city of Sacramento as opposed to the county.
Sorry, the city of Sacramento, correct. And they do not offer anywhere near the suite of services that we provide.
But they do have the claw.
They do have a claw. As I said, we presented multiple scenarios for consideration. These are kind of the, what those look like in order for us to meet our revenue expenditures, our revenues, match our revenues with our expenditures, as well as develop a reserve balance. Ultimately, after our public workshop, we came back with a hybrid. And here's what was done to kind of smooth out some of the cost. And we moved some corp yard expenses. We moved those out into future years and reduced the total amount. We right-sized our existing fleet and expansion. We delayed replacement of four vehicles later to fiscal year '23 and showed a moderate increase for residential as well as commercial. Here's what the rates would fall out of that. These are the monthly anticipated increases for residential, commercial, and roll-off. $3.50 per month until July, when we jump another $4, $4.50, $5.25, and $6. And here are the rates. These were what was included in the Prop 218 mailer. We put all of them up here. If anybody wants copies, they're in the mailer. Lots of them. That's all I've got.
Any questions of staff?
So, I just had one, actually, two. So, two of the big issues I had was the state mandates you listed, which we've gone over before.
Sorry, I didn't hear you.
One of the, two of the issues I had were the state mandates, obviously. But also, you mentioned that we looked at the bundled rates. So, the other thing I wanted was a cost analysis of the bundled rates versus the percentage of users using those bundled services, right?
Right.
I was told we couldn't get that. So, what did you guys look at to determine the analysis of the bundled rate versus not removing the bundle?
We did not. Early on, when we took it to the Utility Advisory Committee and saying, here's what we're looking at, here's how we're doing it, they were adamant and directed us to not look at decreasing, one, services and to keep the bundled rates or the bundled services together, as it were. So, we didn't analyze the individual costs for each of those services. To do that, we would have to start over, and it would become a much more complex analysis at that point because we would have to, without any real historical data, go in and recalculate how to attribute costs to different services. We would know what they were for the household hazardous waste, and we know what they were for the bulky waste, but we wouldn't have a clear percentage to do it. It would have to fluctuate over time till we got some good empirical data to hone in on that true cost. So, we'd be making a lot of assumptions.
Can I just add to that? Because we did discuss this before. And my recollection of that conversation was that even separating all of that information out doesn't eliminate any positions, doesn't eliminate any equipment. So, it doesn't, there's no point, really, in having that discussion about, you know, not providing it because it doesn't change. All it would do is shift the cost to the regular green waste and recycled and trash. It would increase it.
From my understanding is we haven't done that analysis. So, we don't know if separating that would eliminate anything, but also, the percentage is...
No, it doesn't eliminate any positions.
So, where's that data?
Maybe I can clarify a little bit. What we do know is if we still offered the service by itself and allowed people to opt out of that service, the opting out would be very minimal. Because if you're not making use of it, your neighbor will be. And our costs are still there whether there's two of you or one of you.
But what if you charge for those services is my, so what I wanted to see was the analysis of if you charge for the extra services? Because our percentage, the usage percentages were really low, right? Like, 18 to 20% of the ratepayers use these services. So, 80% will pay for 18 to 20%, right? So, it makes no sense as a, for me, that's all I'm saying. Like, I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying I would really have loved to see that, just to make that comparative analysis, to find out if it's a value app option for ratepayers, right? I don't know how we can make this assumption based upon a utility commission's recommendation to not do all the due diligence and go to the details, for me.
I don't know. I guess I'm struggling with...
Because you said the utility commission said, we don't want to go down that path, right?
Yeah, they said they wanted to keep all of the services and the levels of services that we're currently offering.
For 18, for a very low percentage of ratepayers, though.
Yes, but I think the intangible is what is the benefit to the whole by providing that service? We won't, by people that, if we don't provide it and people aren't willing to pay the extra cost, because it would be essentially higher on a, you know, per each basis, they would choose not to do it. So, we'll end up finding garbage on White Rock and Prairie City.
There's no data to prove that. We don't know that. We're just thinking...
I would say, based on other jurisdictions' experiences, we do have data for that.
And it basically leads to people dumping sofas on this...
Illegal dumping, dumping private dumpsters.
Dumping hazardous waste into a storm drain.
jurisdictions are comparable to Folsom, that you would tangibly say that that would, that our ratepayers are related to, that would dump sofas and whatever.
We currently see it existing now. So, to say by not offering that service, we can only expect it to go higher.
All I'm saying is, how do you know it's our ratepayers?
Oh, we don't know it's our ratepayers.
So, you don't. So, I don't know. I'll leave it at that. But it bothers me that, first of all, I'm not given the details that I've asked for many times, and you make a suggestion to say that we looked at the bundle.
It's not that we can't give you the details. It would have, we would have to start over with our analysis. And this took us, you know, a good seven or eight months just to get to this point. We would literally have to start over and work those different variables back into the, all the equations.
But what is the cost of starting, I mean...
The cost of starting over would be staff time. I believe it costs, in the neighborhood, of $50,000 to $60,000 for our consultant team to analyze all the different scenarios with the bundled services.
Don't you think it would be proper to know all the details prior to this stuff?
I'm sorry?
Don't you think it would be a proper and a value to know all those details for this stuff?
Yeah.
Not when we weren't directed to provide those. At the onset, when we took it to the utility commission, we asked, is this what you want? We can look at, because we knew we were looking at substantial rate increases. And by that point, we knew that the rates were going to be, you know, 15, 20%. We asked, do you want us to look at lowering that? We can look at reducing our services. We can look at eliminating services. And it was unanimous, no. Don't, we, everybody loves the services they get. They love the quality.
See, they're making an assumption of everyone loves the services they're getting, and there's no, there's no way to prove that.
I'm just repeating what was told to us from the Utility Advisory Committee. They said to us, everybody likes the service. Nobody wants, you know, nobody wants to reduce the levels of service that we're providing and the number of services we're providing.
And did we find out, I know you were going to check, Elaine, did we find out if those meetings are public or, like, recorded?
I don't believe they are.
Do you mean the commission meetings?
Utility commission, yeah.
If I may, those meetings are public meetings.
They are public meetings, for sure, yeah.
I don't believe they're recording.
But they're public, public meetings and advertised as such for anyone to attend, for sure, yeah.
And there's minutes.
And there's minutes.
Just two quick things, and maybe possibly to ameliorate some of this concern. The operative state laws here mandate that we not charge more than our cost.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, if, upon further analysis, we were to find some other efficiencies, we can reduce the rate increases when that makes sense, or we can slow them down. We have that flexibility. What we can't do is raise them further without going back through this entire process.
Right, the Prop 218 process is triggered by an increase, but the council has every right to, you know, decrease or, you know, leave as is without a Prop 218 process.
And if you went back in historically and looked at since 2004, there were rate increases on the books that were not enacted.
Well, just a point of clarification, because I was there. The rates were last increased in 2003. At the time that that, you know, because there was five years of projected increases. At that time, because the recycling market was very lucrative in 2004, because we had significant amount of income from selling the recyclables, that and at the time, that was shortly after the state required that you meet certain standards. The city of Folsom was like the first city in the state to meet the recycling goals. So, we were making a boatload of money selling off those recyclables. So, in 2004, after we had increased the rates in 2003, we actually reduced them.
Right.
So...
Dave, some people have specifically pointed out the cost of an extra pickup. Currently, it's $15 per additional pickup. By 2024, that increases to $53. Is that, is that just formula-based where the cost of the extra pickup is? It seemed to me like it was kind of like 1.2 or whatever. to me like it was kind of like 1.2 or whatever times the cost of just the regular monthly? Is it just formula-based, or how are those numbers determined?
I'm being told it is formula-based.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is, the residential solid waste increase is very consistent, you know, over the next five years, but the non-residential is not. Those seem to have a kind of a steeper increase here this first year and then very modest increases the rest. And so I'm just wondering why, why the different approach?
Well, I will give it a shot at that, but if I go astray, Maria McKee can come up and answer that. We really looked at our, the way we provide our services and looked at, back to Council Member Kozlowski, that we need to make sure we're charging appropriately the services that we're providing to the person that's getting the service. Commercial is one of those that we really looked at and how much it costs us to provide that service. So it really is a right sizing in the commercial area. She's looking through her papers, but, so that's, that's the explanation, is we went back and that was part of our whole analysis of our operations, the, looking at how we provide the service and what it costs us to provide that service, and then creating the rate that goes along with that.
Okay, so in very unsophisticated terms, it was out of whack and we're trying to...
There were some areas within our operations that was extremely out of whack, yes.
And, and did it get that out of whack because we went so long without an increase? Is that...
No. Maria McKee.
Okay.
Good evening. Okay, so with the commercial services, the two-yard, three-yard, four-yard, six-yard dumpsters that are at locations, previously, the rates were, the costs were allocated kind of on a per yard basis, but the true cost is really split between fixed cost and variable cost. It costs us the same amount to show up in the truck and lift the bin, whether it is a two-yard or a six-yard bin. That doesn't make any difference. So in right sizing the commercial solid waste rates, we took a look at the fixed cost versus the variable cost and allocated those more appropriately. And then on the commercial recycling rates, those were out of whack intentionally because years ago, when these rates were established, we were trying to create an incentive for businesses to recycle. At the time, the city was required to recycle by mandates, but the businesses were not. And so some of that cost was absorbed into the solid waste rates to keep the recycling rates artificially low. And now businesses are mandated to recycle so we can make those rates more appropriate to what the actual cost is. And that's actually why some of the solid waste rates didn't go up that much, because they had been higher in the past to absorb some of the recycling, so.
Can I ask one more question? Are you finished? Maybe I'm missing something. And if I am, I'm sorry. How do we justify charging the ratepayers with the cost of service when most of the ratepayers aren't using all of those services? I'm missing that, that delta, right? So like, I don't remember the exact percentages you said for usage, and I don't know if you have them on you, but the value-added services that are bundled together, if the majority of ratepayers aren't using it, how do we justify the charges to all the ratepayers for the ones who are?
The majority are using them. So the bulky waste services, I don't have, actually, that's what I was flipping through my binder for, that's what I was looking for. It was around sixty-five percent, it was in the sixties, used the service at least once within the last five-year period. That's for the bulky waste. The hazardous materials was a little lower, and the second green waste and second recycle were relatively high percentages also. So if you look at all of those services across the board, most people are using some of them.
Because if I recall, I thought in your presentation, it was the opposite. It was like closer to the eighteen to twenty percent usage rates, not sixty percent.
Not for bulky waste. Bulky waste is really high usage. On an annual basis, it's lower, and I don't remember that percentage. But if you look at it over time, somebody may not need it this year, but then they may need it the next year. And so that's why I looked at it over a span of five years and over sixty. I think, I think it was sixty-five, but it was in the sixty percentile range.
Any other questions? Okay, then, we have our little script here, myself and the clerk. Because this, again, we have to do this because this is a Prop 218 requirement. So it's now time to open the public hearing to give consideration to the proposed utility rate increases for water, wastewater, and solid waste. Madam Clerk, has notice of this hearing been given in accordance with applicable law?
Yes, as required by Prop 218 and prior resolution of the city council. Notice of this hearing was published once in the Folsom Telegraph on November 28, 2019, and notices were mailed on October 18 of 2019.
I think you're supposed to say to the property owners.
Mailed to the property owners.
Thank you. The public hearing is now officially opened. We will now receive comments and questions and any protests from any interested persons. When all comments have been received, the public hearing will be closed. So we have one request to speak, and this will be over and above the point where we get to the clerk counting the protests that we received, either hand-delivered or by U.S. mail. So our one request to speak is Todd Pfeffer.
In May 2018, I received a mailer notifying all residents of a proposed rate increase. The city planned to increase water and sewer by a combined $12.50. You rescinded the rate increases when you decided to place Measure E on the 2018 ballot, which would have guaranteed a half-cent sales tax increase for ten years. Now you've decided to raise our rates again. However, this time around, you've added increases in garbage. The total increase to our monthly bill is $44.50. This is nearly three times the rate of inflation. The increase alone is about what I pay for homeowners' association dues. You are effectively adding a new expense to our family budget. It certainly feels as if you were punishing the more than seven out of ten voters who soundly defeated Measure E. It wouldn't be so bad if you just came out and admitted the fact that the city will get more revenue out of its residents by hook or by crook. It's this deceptive approach that causes outrage. To review, last year, water and sewer, $12.50. Today, water, sewer, and garbage, $44.50. Councilmember Gaylord, I'd like to thank you for always doing right by the citizens of Folsom. To the other members of the governing body, shame on you. Shame on you. One question, where do I submit my written protest bearing...
You can hand it to the police officer.
Can we respond? No.
You can if you want. I wouldn't recommend it. I would say no at this point because he has left the room. So do we have anybody else that would like to speak to the council on this item? Oh, sorry, we do have one more. That is from, looks like Josh Johnson. And if there's anybody else that would like to, if you would fill out a blue card and leave it with the police officer on this item or any other item, but if it's item seven, the rate increases, we need them like right away. Sorry, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. For the most part, as long as my water's clean and the waste is going to Elk Grove, I'm pretty happy.
We like it better when it goes to Elk Grove, too.
I think Folsom's the greatest city ever. Ernie, I loved watching you over the years talk during public comments. Someday, I think we should have a little bronze statue of you, so when people come up here, we can, we can kind of rub it, you know, and for good luck. But, now, I was at the last meeting and then hearing this again, there's an issue of debt with part of that proposal. So where's the refinance of that debt? Interest rates are all-time low. We should have an option to refinance that.
I'm going to ask our finance director, Stacey Tumani, to tackle that for you, if that's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we actually just did that, so. Got a little rate for you.
So refinancing that debt is huge.
She just, the finance director just explained that we, that we did that.
It could probably even be better. Lost my track of thought for a second. I'm sorry.
It's a crazy state, you're getting into the whole public here, that's fine, I, me.
What's that?
Did you, did you explain it to him?
Yeah, she just said that we just refinanced the mons.
Okay. It'd been nice if those numbers were in the presentation, though, to know that. Money is not something I got a lot of. Right now, out of my check for this year, I've paid $25,000 just in income taxes. Then you tack on property taxes on that, not to mention your insurance, all the other little fees. Last year, you guys tried to sneak in sales tax increase on us. And now there's another $8 billion tax that Sack County wants to do to pay for all the roads going from Elk Grove to here, which years ago, they said during the SECAG meetings that there wouldn't be tax increases for all those things. So, you know, a different day, it's a different tax, and quite frankly, I'm sick of it, you know? I wish you guys, for any state-mandated fee, would turn around and sue the state for each one of those on a separate lawsuit, band together with all your little other cities around here and do the same thing. Sue them. When the federal government says, hey, California, do this, California always says, no, we're not doing that. Well, why can't the little people do that, too? To the state? There's always a big surplus there. How come we're not going for them for more money? Instead, it's always easier to kick it down to the little people. You know, how much more, how much more until people are homeless because of taxes and all that stuff? Does it have to, does it have to happen? People in the foothills are losing their homes because of the home insurance. They can't get home insurance now, so the banks put on hazard insurance that forces out of their mortgage because they can't pay for that. So it's all bulked into one. I mean, nine city employees make 300-plus thousand a year, 67 make over 200. $200,000 a year, 67 employees. You know, it's a lot. Before I came here, I was Googling, trying to find how much the city gave Los Rios to name three stages. And then they turned around and named it the Harris Center. You know, it sounds like a disease. Three stages is great. And, you know, that guy, it's ridiculous, you know? But little people are hurting, folks, you know, and it's, it doesn't feel good. And it's not a lot of money. Right now, five years, it's a lot of money, but...
Okay, we're just about out of time.
Oh, thanks.
Okay, thank you. We have no other request to speak on this item, or do we?
Hello, thank you for your time. Just one note, when I'm listening to Representative over here and the data, they mentioned that the bulk waste was an, or was taken from over five years. So that's a five-year span of data, and then we're talking about a rate increase, which is a yearly or a monthly. So to a point where we're trying to have good analysis of this data, it seems like that was one obvious point where you're talking about usage of bulk is sixty percent over five, the sixty percent likelihood of one person using it over five years, and we're talking about a rate increase that's either going to be monthly or yearly. So it'd be, I think it'd be wise to maybe hire a consultant, pay him $10,000. One Ernst &amp; Young employee could spend a month, review this data, and probably come to an affirmation or some other conclusions, but it seems like there's some flaw in the way that the data was analyzed. So maybe a review of how the data was analyzed seems to be a good thing to do, maybe spend a little bit more time on, on how the data equivocates to the rate increase, which is a monthly or yearly charge. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And we have no other request to speak on this item, so I will close the public hearing.
Can I comment? Do you want to make a final call for any other protest letters?
Do we have any other protests that anybody has with them in the room that they would like to deliver? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. So, you know what, we are going to take, the clerk will be required to count all of the protests that have been received. So we are going to take, will this take five minutes, 10 minutes?
Madam, if I, Madam Mayor, if I may, you can certainly take a recess, if you want, a short recess, or you may continue this item and take on the next item. It's up to you.
We're going to take, we'll take 10 minutes while Krista's counting these protests. Okay, so we'll be back at 7:47. Okay. I believe that we have completed the counting.
We have. The city has received a total of 201 written protests for the proposed water rates, 210 protests for the wastewater rates, 227 protests for the solid waste rates and fees. Now, these numbers include nine protests that could not be validated, but they were nonetheless assumed to be valid for purpose of tabulating a majority protest. And these numbers do fall short of what was needed for a protest. Therefore, a majority protest does not exist for the proposed utility rate increases.
Okay, so my next line is, at this time, because a majority protest does not exist, it is appropriate for the city council to consider resolutions to establish new utility rates. I'm going off-script here, but just for the record, City Clerk, if you could let us know, how many protests would have been required in order to prevent the city from being able to consider the rate increases?
We would need just over 12,440 protests...
Okay.
...to meet the threshold set by Prop 218 limits.
Okay, thank you. So...
If I may add, Madam Mayor, for, for water rates, because some customers are not city Folsom customers, in Folsom, they are same-one customers. So the threshold for the protest would be 11,107 D7.
Okay. Meaning not anywhere close to a majority protest.
That's correct.
Okay. So do we have any other questions or comments by the council members? Do we have anybody that would like to make a motion?
I think I'd like to start with a comment. First of all, I want to thank staff for all their work, and I want to thank our utility commission for their work. You know, I don't think anybody wants to raise rates, and certainly, none of us want to pay more rates, but we want our garbage to be picked up, we want water to come out of our faucet, and when we flush our toilet, we want it to go to Elk Grove, so. Speaking to what the gentleman was talking about earlier about the debt service, you know, as Ms. Tumani mentioned, we did recently refinance that, and I think the goal would be that we pay that off, and, you know, we don't borrow anymore. We use these, you know, part of this rate includes money for capital expenses, so we can, we can operate on a pay-as-you-go basis, which obviously is the ideal. And I just want to touch on the, the comment about, you know, not everybody uses every service, or, you know, how do we separate those out? But I don't think there's any way it can be an exact science, because some people put their garbage out every two weeks. Some people put out their recycling once a month. put their garbage out every two weeks, some people put out their recycling once a month, some people put out their garbage can and it's half-full, some people put it out and the lid is, you know, can't close because it's so full. So there is just no exact way to charge somebody for, you know, for the actual waste or recycling or whatever that they're putting out, so, you know, I, you know, I think it, it, there's just no way it can be an exact science, so.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I, just one quick question. The one thing that I wanted to point out about the process of going through the Utility Commission for, for these rates, because in the two years prior to my joining the City Council, I was on the Utility Commission when this discussion first started, is that that board specifically dragged our directors through some mud to make sure that the, the cost projections were not overly pessimistic in terms of extraordinary escalation of costs or capricious use of additional funds. They, we run a, as you can see by the comparison of what our rates are to other communities in the region, we run very efficiently, given the size of our city and the, the scope of the services that we provide. So I feel, you know, I kind of have a little bit owned this topic for the last three years, and that first slide that went up that had all the different meetings, I think I've been to all of them, and I feel very confident making a motion now to ask the Council to approve Resolution Number 10362.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
I'll move Resolution Number 10363.
I will second.
As modified, apologize, Madam Mayor, as modified by the agenda update.
Okay, and, and with the wastewater rates, I'm just going to make a comment. I was going to report this out at the end of the meeting during council comments, but I have served for most of the past 21 years as the city's representative to the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District Board that Marcus referred to earlier. That, again, is that the, the pipelines that go to and the plant that lives in Elk Grove. Several years ago, there was a long discussion about state mandated updates, upgrades to the wastewater plant, where all of our wastewater goes. At the time, that project was originally projected to be a little over $2 billion. I actually argued with the State Board that it was even necessary, but, you know, we were required to do it regardless. The total project cost for that was decreased to about $1.2 billion from the original cost estimate. And so several years ago, Regional SAN, that board that's made up of people from the county and all, and all of the jurisdictions that, who has wastewater that feeds into that plant, including West Sacramento and part of Yolo County, we were forced to look at potentially very, very large rate increases. We found a way to reduce that based on the project cost, so the, one portion of the utility bill that everybody in this room is paying, $37 of that bill goes to Regional SAN for operation of those large diameter pipelines and that plant. Those rates were increased about four or five years ago, and based on information that was provided at the last Regional Sanitation District Board meeting that I attended a couple of weeks ago, the, the district, because they have done very well with keeping the project cost down, and the district itself has an extremely good credit rating, so their bond rate is at 1.3 or something, some very, very low number. So Regional SAN is not expected to have to increase that rate from the $37 for at least the next 10 years. So that's the only bit of good news I can shed on this particular subject.
But we have a motion and a second on the wastewater rates. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
No.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
And I will move Resolution Number 10364.
And I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Nope.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes.
Okay, we will then move to Item A, New Business. And our first is an ordinance relating to the repeal of the, and reenacting of Chapter 8.36 of the Folsom Municipal Code concerning Folsom Fire Code. And I understand that's going to be taken in conjunction with Ordinance Number 1298, repealing certain chapters of the Buildings and Construction Code and updating concerning enforcement of the construction codes. Again, intro and first reading.
Yes, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. Felipe Rodriguez, your fire chief, and Ms. Pam Johns, the Director of Community Development. We're here this evening together to present two new business items, however, one presentation in unity. We had an opportunity to meet and with our staff, put together a presentation for you to consider this evening as a first reading and introduction. With that, before I introduce our staff members who will be presenting, I just wanted to acknowledge several of our staff members who are here in the audience tonight and several who are not, who day-to-day provide great service for this community to ensure safe and responsible growth for our community. So they're all sitting in the center row, then I wanted to acknowledge them. But with that, I'm going to introduce our building official, Mr. Scott Zangrando, and our Deputy Fire Marshal, Ms. Lauren Ono.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. What, just a little background on, on what we're doing here, the...
It's the fire department that knows exactly how to operate that equipment.
So, as you're probably aware, the, the building and fire codes are adopted every three years, they have a triennial cycle, and so the last time they were adopted was January in 2017. These modifications affect the FMC in, in Chapter 8.36 for the fire code and Chapter 14, or Title 14 for the, the building code. The adoption of the, uh, fire and building codes are based on, the California Fire and Building Codes are based on the international codes and uniform codes. 2018 international codes include building and residential and fire and, and the existing buildings and other codes, and the uniform codes are the mechanical and the plumbing codes. And the local amendments can occur to them, but also the, the California Building Standards Commission makes adjustments to those codes, the international codes, and turns them into what we call the California Codes. And then in addition to that, the local amendments can be made also. The California Health and Safety Code require, or mandates that the building codes are applicable to all occupancies within the state of California, so it's mandated that there's, that they're adopted. And, and those amendments are, from those codes can be, become effective on January 1st, 2020, whether they're adopted or not, the, the entire code section. The government codes, the government code grants that the City of Folsom authority to adopt these, these references and any, any modifications to them. And, and with that, the, there, there are certain amendments that can be adopted, and Lauren will talk about that.
Hi, good evening. So Scott, as Scott mentioned, the Health and Safety Code does allow us to make local amendments due to three different reasons, climatic, geological, and topographical. So some of the climatic reasons here in the City of Folsom are, we have high temperatures, high winds, low humidity, and that can affect fire spread. In the wintertime, we have fog and rain that can lead to traffic congestion, increased vehicle accidents, and reduced response times. So with hot summers and wet winters, that also can lead to more vegetation growth in the summertime and flashy fuels. Some of the geological things that we face here is seismic activity and soil stability. So if we were to have an earthquake or aftershocks here, we could experience building collapses, damaged water mains with interconnected hydrants and landslides that, again, would affect our access and structure stability. Some of the topographical factors here are slope, fuel, and access. We do have in the City of Folsom some sloped areas. Again, the sloped areas are going to lead to a faster fire spread. We do have limited access to certain areas of terrain, which will slow our response times and slow down evacuations. And we also have protected habitats that increase fuel density because some of the rules there, we can't reduce the vegetation as much as we may want to. So for the Folsom Fire Code, some of the things that we are going to do, our mitigation strategies for these, for these is require fire-resistant construction for structures that are within 30 feet of open spaces. So we'll do that also. We want to require defensible space for structures that are in these areas and have appropriate access to the structures. And then as well as continue to have sufficient resources to respond and for any emergencies that we may have.
As far as the building code goes, historically, there hasn't been any substantial modifications to the building code. In this cycle, we're retaining some minor modifications to the administration portions of the code, and, and we're retaining the pool barrier requirements for health and safety purposes. As far as the model codes themselves go, there's not any substantial changes to them, save the energy code, which has been, in the last few code cycles, has had substantial changes that have, that are instigated by the governor's net zero energy requirements. And for 2020, that, the idea was that residential structures would be zero net energy, and in 2030, commercial buildings would be zero net energy. So that, that's increasingly, you're going to see the photovoltaics on most of the structures and an increased envelope requirements.
Quick question before you go off that slide. What is the reason for the bullet that says that we're retaining the pool barrier requirements for health and life safety? Does that mean that that's been eliminated from the state code?
Well, the, the state code has some requirements on there, but the, the City of Folsom, for the last several code cycles at least, has had some additional barrier requirements, and that, that really prevents access from the pool, to a pool from like the neighbor's yard or, you know, residents on, on, on the streets and that sort of thing, so it's...
Okay, and I, and I just want to point out for, for people that may be in the room or that are watching this at some point in time, that that requirement only applies at this point on transfer of ownership of the property. So there are many pools in Folsom that were in place before this requirement was instituted, and I just want to let people know that they don't have to put the barricades up until, unless the property transfers and they sell the house.
So adopting the, the 2019 addition of the fire code and building codes with local amendments should not cause any financial impact to the city further than what, what is current. So with that, the staff believes that the adoption of the 2019 addition of the California Fire and Building Codes with amendments is necessary to provide a reasonable and prudent level of health, fire, and life safety to residents, businesses, and visitors of the City of Folsom. So staff recommends that the City Council conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 1297, an ordinance of the City of Folsom repealing and reenacting Chapter 8.36 of the Folsom Municipal Code concerning the Folsom Fire Code. In addition, staff recommends that the City Council conduct the first reading of Ordinance Number 1298, an ordinance of the City of Folsom repealing and reenacting certain chapters of Title 14, Building and Construction of the Folsom Municipal Code concerning enforcement of Folsom construction codes. Thank you, is, is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for staff about either of these? And I just want to let everybody know that there were a few typos and minor errors that were in the original staff report, and those have been revised, and I believe the revised transmittal sheet is at the back table. And I'm going to thank Vice Mayor Sarah Aquino, Eagle Eye Aquino, for picking up those typos in the staff reports. Mike, you're looking like you may have a question?
Only selfish ones about a house I want to design. I'll take those offline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody?
I'll move 12, Ordinance Number 1297.
Madam Mayor, as amended by the agenda update.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes, and I'll move first reading of, introduction, first reading of 1298.
Second.
Once again, Madam Mayor, as amended by the agenda update. Thank you, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we move on to appointment of three at-large members to the Folsom Historic District Commission. And I don't know that we have a staff introduction on this one, but I'm going to ask that any of the people that have applications, well, we do have one request to speak, but I think goes along with the comment I'm about to make. Any of the people that have applied to be on the Historic District Commission that would like to come up and tell us a couple more things about themselves, I'd be happy to have you do that, if anybody wants to. And we might as well start with the person who actually submitted a speaker card, that would be Darren Brack. And I know there are others in the audience that have applied, so if you want to come up, welcome after Darren.
All right, and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Darren Brack, and I currently serve as the Chair of the Historic District Commission, and I have requested to speak this evening because I am seeking reappointment to the HDC. I do qualify for two of the three positions that are available this evening. The first of these positions is the position in which I currently serve in, which is the resident within a historic district. And at our most recent Historic District Commission meeting, Commissioner Candy Miller did retire from the HDC, and she had served for 21 years in the position as the commissioner that is actively involved in historic preservation and also represents the Folsom Historical Society and the Heritage Preservation League, which is a unique position with specialized skill sets, and I do believe that I possess the qualifications to fulfill the requirements of that position, and so therefore I applied for both positions. And I'd like to spend just a few moments highlighting some of my involvement in the historic district and historic preservation. My involvement began in 2004, when I purchased a home in the historic district. That is a Victorian home, it was built in the 1800s, unfortunately, it had been neglected, so I spent a lot of effort and financial resources restoring it to its original charm, and then subsequently built an Italianate-style home in the district, and to ensure that it fit within the historic nature of the district, spent a lot of time studying the architecture of 1800-style Italianates and designed it architecturally to fit within that style. In 2006, I began participating in the Southern Street Revitalization Workshops, and continued participating in them until the completion of the revitalization. I currently serve on the Board of the Muir House Foundation. I have previously served on the Board of the Folsom Historical Society. I am a board member of the Heritage Preservation League, the Historical Society, the Muir House Foundation, the Historic Folsom Residents Association, the California Preservation Foundation, and the American Planning Association. As a member of the California Preservation Foundation, I have participated in workshops regarding preservation, planning, technology, and advocacy. And as a member of the American Planning Association, have attended preservation education training for planning commissioners. I also have studied archaeology and land use management at the University of Southern California. I have volunteered for the History Museum, and while I was on the Board, I participated in the preservation and digitization of photographs, historic photographs, and that's, I'm actually having conversations with the current president and director to see if we can continue that project in 2020. I've also volunteered for the Chinese History Museum, because the roof is in bad shape, and so therefore, in order to protect the Chan House from the upcoming fall and winter rainstorms, we did some work to protect the house and improve the roofing situation. And I have also volunteered for the Folsom Historic District Association and assisted the Tree Lighting Committee, and also volunteered for the past two years for the Hometown Parade. And in conclusion, I want to thank the Honorable Mayor and City Council very much for providing me with the opportunity to serve on the Historic District Commission, and I ask you for your support and for your vote, so that I may continue serving the Historic District merchants and the residents and the City of Folsom and City Council for another term. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Okay, I know there's, I see at least two other candidates, so come on up and tell us about yourself.
Good evening, Members of the City Council. I am Kathleen Cole. I am a resident of the historic district. I recently retired from about 35 years serving as a public sector advocate before the state legislature and state administrative agencies. In that role, I knew and learned very quickly how important it was to build collaboration and relationships with those that you're trying to resolve complex public policy issues with. I am a good listener, and I learned that that's got to be a key to the trade that I just retired from. And in order to find that sweet spot, you need to be willing to work with folks from both sides of a particular issue. I may not have the long list of credentials that some of the other co-applicants have under their belt, but I am a fresh face. I do my homework. I give 110, sometimes 120% in whatever I do. And what's more important, I love this community. I want to give back to the community and serve the people that are residents and businesses here. I think it's very important that we ensure that the historic district remains vibrant and that its historical character and charm is retained, but yet make sure it balances the needs of the local community. So I want to thank you for your consideration. You have my resume before you, and I wish you all the best of holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Lane, and thank you very much to the Honorable Mayor and the City Council for taking the time to ask us to come to the mic. I wasn't quite prepared, so I apologize if I'm a little off the script. So my name is John Lane, and I have, I'm a very recent addition to the historic district, and that was after about a 10-year search. My wife and I looked all over the Western United States looking for a place to come. Ultimately, we were looking for a historic community that was, had retained a tone of its charm, but also was not just an amusement park and ultimately had a vibrant balance of both business and community engagement and safety. And so ultimately, what we found was the Folsom Historic District, through all the great work of the people that have been here for a long time, have created an amazing amenity and a place to live. So we ultimately purchased the property and then did a ton of research at how to restore that property back to its original state. And so we, from Sacramento region, and I was transplanted here by the military, and so for the last year and a half, we did a lot of work on the design. And then for the last, it took us about a year to do the permitting because in the historic district, there are lots of unique challenges that of course befall you. And working with the city staff was amazing. They were fantastic and helped us through that. And ultimately, for the last seven months, we'd been building, and then we moved in about two weeks ago. So when I say recent addition, I mean really recent. We're still unboxing. But that doesn't mean that I don't have experience in planning and in permitting. Ultimately, I've worked for a company as their environmental director, and so I do, for the last 25 years, have done land use planning and ultimately in the Sacramento County, have worked with the advisory councils, the planning commissions, and various boards of supervisors. And so I know what it's like to work both as a proponent end and on the other end of receiving those comments. And I've worked with our neighbors on the projects that I've worked with. And ultimately, I've learned that you need to listen before you speak, understand, do your homework on what the projects are. And I feel like I could bring that to the Folsom Historic Commission. And so with that, I'd like to ask for your support and appreciate again your time.
Thank you. Do we have, anybody else that has an application in?
Rosario.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen and Women. Elaine, my name is Rosario Rodriguez, and I have submitted an application to reapply for the Historic District Commission. I am a business owner on Sutter Street. I have been on the block about three and a half years, and I spent about 50% of my life in the historic district. I have really enjoyed being on the commission and reviewing the projects that have come before us. And so I ask for your support to be on the commission once again this coming March or April. I would have, I would be on the commission in two years. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't see anybody else, so we may be fresh out of candidates present in the room. Anybody have any questions or comments or anything else that they want to ask?
I would just comment quickly. You know, the good news is, we've got a lot of great applicants. The bad news is, we have more great applicants than we have spots. So thank you all for applying. You know, we wish we could find a space for everybody. And if you don't get on this one, please continue to be involved and attend the meetings and keep applying because we've got a lot of great residents who have a lot to offer. So thank you.
And there may even be other opportunities on other commissions that might be of interest. I know Kathleen, it looks to me like you have significant water background, and that could be something that could be hugely beneficial if you're not appointed to the historic district tonight. That could be great for adding some technical expertise and background to the Utility Advisory Commission. So. So we will simply move forward with tallying the ballots, and we'll pass them back over to the clerk.
So Madam Mayor, if you're in agreement, I'll just go down through each of the categories and we can listen to it all at once. Okay. So Mayor Howell votes on the representative for the historic preservation for Darren Brack. Representing resident of the historic district is John Lane. And representing a business owner is Rosario Rodriguez. Vice Mayor Aquino's ballot for the applicant representing historic preservation is Darren Brack. For a resident of the historic district is Kathleen Cole. For a business owner is Rosario Rodriguez. Councilmember Sheldon's ballot for the applicant representing historic preservation is Darren Brock. For a resident of the historic district, John Lane. For a business owner, Rosario Rodriguez. Councilmember Kozlowski's ballot for the applicant representing historic preservation is Darren Brack. For a resident of the historic district is Kathleen Cole. Business owner, Rosario Rodriguez. And Councilmember Gaylord's ballot for the representative of historic preservation is Darren Brock. For a resident of the historic district is Bob Delp. And for a business owner is Rosario Rodriguez.
So we've got a tie here, but I think I.
I'll offer to change mine to Kathleen.
Okay, so if you could just fill that out and pass it back over to.
I'm going to offer to change mine to Kathleen Cole.
So Councilmember Gaylord's vote is changing from Bob Delp, so you would eliminate that and add a vote for Kathleen Cole. Yes.
Okay, so I think we have all three of those positions decided. Congratulations on your return, Darren. Welcome, Kathleen, and congratulations on your return, Rosario. We look forward to all of the hard work that you guys put into the Historic District So we will now move to item nine, convene joint city council successor agency, public financing authority, South of Highway 50 parking authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority Board Meeting. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Kozlowski?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
And Howell?
Here. And we have consent calendar. Anybody want to move consent calendar?
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes, but I'd like to ask a follow-up question once we're done. Is that okay?
You can ask it now if you want.
Okay, this is insanely like nerdy, but how is it that the investments that we have in municipal bonds are selected just in general terms? Because we own the debt of a bunch of our other California communities, which I think is entertaining.
We usually go by the best rate of return. So if somebody had a higher interest rate and we're going to get more by owning that, we'll choose that as long as they're within our allowed investment and at the right credit.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm guessing we don't have any, any bonds from Regional San.
We have one that's at a very high interest rate, so I would suggest that their credit may be a little sketchy, but that's okay.
No, I suggested to Regional San that they should consider loaning their surplus out to other agencies because their interest rate is so low.
Gotcha. I'll vote yes.
Okay. So we're, yes with Kozlowski.
So resuming the vote, Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
And Howell?
Yes. And with that, we will adjourn the joint city council successor agency, public financing authority, Folsom South of 50 parking authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting, and reconvene the council meeting. And our next item is the selection of the mayor and vice mayor for next year. And we do have a few requests to speak on this, so you will have three minutes, and then the council will go on to fill out our ballots. And first speaker is Sharon Kindle, then John Combs, then Aaron Rawls, Matt Farren, and then Zaid Akhteran. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing that. So Sharon, you're first up.
My name is Sharon Kindle, and I am here to thank Ernie Sheldon for inspiring me, encouraging me to work with the city. And I just want to say that the progress that our working group has made is directly associated with Ernie. We, a group of volunteers now have developed environmental and historical program for the Hinkle Creek nature area for future generations and to educate like the people south of Highway 50 of the importance of preserving nature. I have also helped Crystal Tobias on the Adopt a Trail Program. I've helped the, with fire prevention and weed abatement by doing research and finding that the spider mower has been helpful in the nature area that has, is sensitive and goats do not belong in a nature area. So I really want to thank Ernie, and I want to thank Roger Gaylord for listening to the citizens of Folsom. I think the Folsom citizens are, have passion, they have education, knowledge, and it's a resource that needs to be encouraged. And I would just say that a leader's job isn't to have all ideas. It is to make sure that the ideas are heard and that the best one wins. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress, and working together is success. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next up is John Combs.
Good evening, everybody. Had the opportunity to work with the city council for the past five years reasonably intently, and I wanted to single out a couple council folks that I thought have done an exceptional job. And I know that Ernie was elected to the city council in about 2008 and has yet to have the opportunity to serve as mayor. And I think that his contribution to this community has earned him that opportunity. And while, Ernie, it is very difficult to stand in front of you tonight with that Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer hat on and make this recommendation, I want to let you know that I, I still came up here and spoke on your behalf, okay?
Once a kid, always a kid.
I, I think what distinguishes Roger and, and Ernie in their support of the community is their ability to listen. And you have two people who are almost 180 degrees opposite from one another. You have one old-school individual, Ernie Sheldon, who'd rather get a telephone call than get an email or a text, who'd rather meet in person than have a telephone conversation, and who's very involved in the community. You have another individual, Roger Gaylord, who approaches it from a different perspective. He uses his age groups, media methods, to enlist the, the opinions of the individuals in the community through social media, and they both do a great job, but in very different ways. I know Ernie. I ran into him one Saturday morning at about 7:00 before Little League Parade, thinking to myself, even though I have a son playing in Little League, why would I ever get up at 6:00 in the morning to do it? Only to find out that Ernie was doing it for his 14th year in a row. So I, I think people like that in the community stand out and contribute. I want to thank Roger and Ernie for their contribution. I think that the new blood that Ernie's, that Roger's bringing in the community is very healthy to be able to reach out to thousands of people, not hundreds of people, to enlist their support through social media. And, and I know from having conversations with him, he's very sensitive to that. He's not listening to people who are sitting in front of him and advocating to him, he's listening to what the community has to say. So I hope you guys have the opportunity to serve as leadership in the city council of Folsom. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Aaron Rawls, then Matt Farren, and then Zaid.
Good evening. Aaron Rawls, 32-year resident of Folsom, and I just wanted to come up here and say my two cents in regards to my thoughts on the mayor and the vice mayor positions. I think it's definitely something that should be left up to the people in the city. For too many years, we've had the same group being able to control who our mayor and vice mayor is. Ernie Sheldon has donated, from my rough calculations, approximately 34 years of his life in various committees, as well as serving on city council for, I believe, 14 years. And I don't even know if Ernie wants to be mayor or not, but I just feel like it's an important fact to note that for 14 years, Ernie's been passed up. And I believe that is because the, the influence that outside groups have on making sure these certain seats are filled. It is definitely a position that should be held by the people, that should be elected by the people. Our last election alone, quarter million dollars was spent making sure certain people got elected. And Sarah Aquino, phenomenal speaker, super smart woman, but was named vice mayor on day one, and that to me didn't make sense when you have the experience of someone like Ernie Sheldon sitting up there, Roger Gaylord that's been doing a phenomenal job for years. And I just want to say thank you to Ernie for the years of dedication to the city, as well as Roger for fighting the fight for the people. Thank you.
Next speaker is Matt Farren.
Thank you very much for letting me come up and speak tonight. Aaron said a lot of what myself and my neighbors that I talk to, and luckily, you didn't have a bunch more blue cards tonight because they're at homesick with their kids or at sports and stuff like that. But there is a high level of interest here in this city from your residents that they want to be able to sit there and pick their mayor and vice mayor themselves. And I don't think that that should be something that would be scary to anybody on the city council member unless you're scared that you wouldn't be getting voted in. Folsom residents want people that actually care about this city and have that continued interest and don't. interest and don't have a personal agenda behind it. Ernie, Roger, I think there's a lot of Folsom residents that would like either one of you to be mayor and vice mayor right now because they just don't see it. It's not commented on in regards to a personal agenda. So, thank you.
Thanks, Matt. And our last request to speak is Zaid.
Good evening, everyone. First time speaking at the council meeting, a little bit nervous, but thanks to everybody for your service. We really appreciate it. I'm a relatively new Folsom resident, 13 years, and, you know, I think it's a great place to live, fantastic community, great place to bring up your kids. As an obvious member of a minority group in Folsom, we have some issues and problems, and, you know, especially the kids can get bullied and targeted in schools. The ladies can get bullied when they're out and about. So particularly wanted to thank Roger for his support, open support, and his, you know, walking the walk, not just talking, but actually when people have called him out and said, "Why are you supporting this group?" or "Why are you speaking up for them?", he's told them off quite publicly. And he's always come to us with support and help and advice. And if we have a question, I think everyone has made the comment that he has been the most open member in the community, in the council, to the community. I may disagree with him on a number of issues, but he and I will have a conversation and agree to disagree, but he'll always listen. So I just wanted to say those words. Also appreciate one or two other folks. Elaine, Sarah have also attended our events and really appreciate that as well. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any questions or comments before we fill out our ballots up here?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. So I've sat up here for three of these now, and I came up here with the intention of actually nominating Ernie Sheldon for mayor. We change the way we do this because we do it as a ballot. Some of the comments that were made today I agree with. I think Ernie has served this community amazingly well. And I actually took the time to take a peek at his service and what he's done for this community. And I don't think most, let me bring it up. Well, most don't talk about it when we talk about resume for who should serve this community. We literally pick internally like it's, it's basically a charade to me. I've seen folks tell you one thing and tell you another. I've seen backdoor deals being made because I want this or I want that. And I see, you know, new inexperienced folks tell inexperienced folks that they're not ready to serve, or maybe whatever their political disagreement is with that candidate at the time and now council member serving together. It really conflates the issue. It banks it to where then honest, just, fair process is not what this is. This doesn't equate to that. I'm going to announce today, I wanted to vote for Ernie only because he did put his hand out for me. I know that he won't be appointed as mayor. I know that if I put my name on the hat, I wouldn't be voted as mayor. The decisions were already made up here, and anyone who tells you different is absolutely not telling you the truth. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to abstain from this vote altogether, and I'm going to announce that I'm pushing forward with a citizens initiative and a ballot measure to put the vote on the ballot so people can decide if they want to vote for their mayor or not. That's happening this year. So that's pretty much where I'll leave it at.
Do you have any, Mike, do you have any comments or questions?
Well, thanks.
Ernie?
If I can find the microphone, I'll have something to say. First of all, thanks to all of my friends that come up and say nice things. I appreciate that. I'm having a hard time talking because I'm going to set the record straight of what I'm experiencing right now. I learned in the military, you establish a code of conduct and ethics. In my 33 years of active duty in the Air Force, my code was country, family, and self. In that order. When I retired and came to Folsom, I had that code. And I thought I could contribute because it's a new city, just building up, going from 11,000 when I came to 80,000 now. And I always had experience in the Air Force handling and doing things for kids. I always felt the kids were the future. I never worried about young people. They were just part of my life. I had a daughter and a son. But, so I can about, when I lost my wife in 92, very young, I decided, what do I do? And I said, I'll give all my life to the city. Excuse me. So I did. Excuse me. So I did. So I did. Never regretted an hour, what I did. 20 years in the park commission, two years in the planning commission, a year and a half on the library commission, 25 years sitting in that back row, watching the city council perform, trying for four times and getting beat four times. Always the barriers made, you know, when late. But I went back and I worked with other people, commissioners, to build parks. A lot of people give me, they call me Mr. Parks in Folsom. I may start things, but we finish things. And the 44 parks that got done in my tenure, wasn't just me. It was six other commissioners, all with different skills, all with the dedication to make something good for this town. Gary Mann, Jim Williams, you call him Jigger, Richard Gray, Rick Schaefer, Tommy Satuno, Bryce Walker, Ken Greifeld, Dave Benavento, Dave Stanley, Will Kempton, Robert Mann, Robert Giacominis, Barbara Leary, Susan Shepard, Steve Hall, I could go on. These are all the people that learned to work together to produce, I think, one of the finest park and rec departments, run very, very well for the city of these people, for our town, for our kids, and for our families. And when I came on the city council, the point I want to make is you get things together. You can be a lone wolf, you can point out all the problems, you can say, "This is bad, this is bad, that's bad." You could always vote no. Vote no is easy. But it's the point I want to make, and then I want to tell you is example of what I learned. 25 years in the back office got me set up of being in the council. But when I got on the council, I learned a heck of a lot that I didn't know sitting back there. And I learned it by listening and cooperating with other council members. When I came on the council in 2008, it's the first time in 30-some years that I was here that we faced financial crisis. The whole nation did. We lost 150 employees, many, many good employees, who never came back. Why? Because they got jobs with other places, even in the hard times. But we didn't have room for them. We had to drop 150. We made all kinds of changes. Finance people helped us, personal affairs helped, everybody helped. The employees helped, stepped up and took cuts and did this and that. And we got through the financial with very little impact on the people, other than some lost their homes, and that was just so sad. But what I got on here is ironic. I got in January of 2008, was putting in 2008, and December, but I took office in 2009. And my first wandering through, doing my grocery shopping in Rayleigh's, I thought I was being stalked by a lady. That's pretty good for my age, you know? And after the first time, a casual, "You're a new councilman. Yeah, I need to talk to you. Okay, sure, just give me a call." Second time I ran into her, she says, "Well, you need to call me. I need to call you." After the third time I ran into her, I better find out what the hell's bothering her, you know? And it was a gal that was a part of the ambassadors group down at the chamber. And she says, "I need you to fix the toilets at the rodeo arena because us women are tired of using 50-year-old porta potties." It sounds like a park issue to me, but, you know, okay, all right, I'll try it. So I come up to my colleagues in the council, and I know I can do only that, but we can do a lot. So what I did, I asked Mayor Miklos, who just recently left the mayorship, who was a regular councilman like me. I said, "How would you like to team up with me and redo a project? And we try to redo the 50-year-old bathrooms down at the rodeo." He said, "Well, I got a lot of things on the plate to carry over from being the mayor." I said, "I'll tell you what, let me do the work, and when I get stuck or I have a problem, I'll come to you for help, and you can tell me, and that way we coordinate, and we'll get this done." We had six months, January rodeo starts in July. Well, we worked together. We got the park and rec commission, we found a local vendor, a hometown man. We got him appointed, we got the things, we got going, and we just did what we wanted to do. And we made a brand-new bathroom in the rodeo arena. We put a second one in at the rodeo arena. We fixed the snack bar in the rodeo arena. We added three storages, two for park and rec and one for the chamber. And we fixed a new bathroom up at the, behind the chamber building. We did that. And then when we got done doing that, the city council as a whole brought all the people, Tim O'Shea, Steve Shuck, who was the contractor for us, Robert Goss, all the people that came together to make that happen in six months. So I learned a real lesson right off the bat in the first six months. If you're going to be the new man on the port, you got to have allies, and you got to work together. You got to learn to give up some and maybe have difference on, you know, on your ideas of what shouldn't should not be in the city. But you have to balance them to be, to you do something good for the city. If you want to just be a rogue or a rebel, well, people may think you're tremendous, but you get nothing done. And what you do, you do. I'm proud of the 44 parks, parks that me and these guys I mentioned all got done, guys and gals, okay? And I'm proud of what we did at the arena. And then the governor decided to take our redevelopment money and put a cramp on our plans. We had a lot more we were going to do down there. But the example is, if you're going to progress on this council, you have to partnership it true and just work together and share. Share the credit. Don't be afraid to not work with somebody, to give them credit. Everybody has a share of doing things. That was one point I learned. So I say, you know, in the summer of this year, in May, April, well, I'm glad 2019's getting the end. I am tired of 2019. A little girl knocked me off the street at the lighting last year and cracked my ribs. So the beginning of 2019, I had cracked ribs for two months, and that is not fun, not for an 85-year-old guy. That is not fun. So I got through that, and I was having a little disorder swallowing. So I probably got a Kaiser department to go down the scope and see what's going on. They fixed it to it, but lo and behold, what did they find in there? A little bitty ulcer. And the guy at the doctor told me, "Well, we found an ulcer. We're going to take a biopsy." Well, I've had biopsies before. Three days later, they announced to me I have cancer. And I had no, you know. I said, "Okay, we'll beat it." And I was looking forward to the end of this year, probably be in the mayor. So being an ex-military guy, I know how to take an order and follow orders. The doctor said, "This would be what we're going to do. You're going to take six chemo's, you're going to have an operation in your stomach, and you have six more." Okay? Chemo one was sort of good. I thought, "But maybe I can handle this." Chemo two, I couldn't even get out of the hospital, I'll be in sick. And after 14 days of sick and losing 40 pounds in a year, I said, "Wait a minute, I'm not going to make the operation at this rate." So I said, "Okay, one more time," the doctor, "I'll try number three." We got through number three, I said, "That's it, I'm done." And I know chemo, because I'll never make an operation. At the time, I was so very sick in November, I called the city manager and said, "You know, I think there's some interest on the part of the city council to make me the mayor for the last year of my term, because after 37 years of service as a city and 33 in the Air Force, I need a rest." And I said, "Will you convey my remarks to the mayor and the vice mayor? That I'm physically not ready or able to do what a mayor should do for the city." I have bad eyes now, 2400 something, that's pretty bad, because chemo does it to you, it give you a very bad eye. So besides looking for an operation coming in January, and who knows what else, I figured I wasn't going to be a sham and walk around carrying this in my hands so I could look to see somebody's card they would give me in a meeting representing the city. No, that's not what a mayor does. A mayor is very important to the city. He represents the city, represents all you and me. And I told him, "Please convey my regrets that if they wanted to make me the mayor, I can't do it. Physically, I will not be able to handle it." And as it has to be done. The city comes first, remember, country, family, and self, selfish, sitting back trying to get well. As I ended my chemo at the third time and got ready to do, I had to be, start getting better well so I could get ready to have the operation. As I got better, I thought, "Well, maybe I can handle the vice mayor. I can contribute something more than just the councilman." Because I have been vice mayor, I think, three times, and I know how to do that, and I know what the limitations are in it. So I did likewise. I go to my mentor, the city manager, and said, "You can pass that information on to the colleagues if they're interested. I would be interested as a vice mayor. To be the mayor would be a disservice to this town and me personally. I would be embarrassed, and I'd be embarrassing this town, and I would not do that." So tonight, Roger, is it disappointing that we didn't stand up? I stood up and fight the battle. I don't mind being on the losing end of a 3-1. Roger's concerned because when he got on the council, the chamber representatives have 3-2. When I got on the council, it's 4-1, so I know what this is. If you want to change as mayor, go like we used to do back in the mid-'80s and '90s. You had an issue, go out to the shopping center, sit there and freeze and write and get signatures and put the ballot on, the measure on the ballot. And that's what Roger, I think, I heard him proposing to do that. That's fine, that's the way you do it. But you got to, you got to put the city ahead of yourself, and you got to talk in truths, not half-truths, okay? I'm not good at voicemail. The lawyer told us, "Stay off of voicemail," because we could be violating the rule of more than three making, because we're all on it, and nobody knows who's on it.
Social media.
Social media, rather. So I stayed off of it, okay? I listen, I watch it, and I sometimes get mad as hell, but I shut up and forget it, okay? So my turning down the mayorship, and I know I might be disappointed somewhere. So my turning down the mayorship, and I know I might be disappointed in some of my friends, but I know my body, I know my son. He came at the right time to deliver me. He didn't know I was gonna get sick. I didn't know I was gonna get sick. But he's been the true, he's my chauffeur, the coach, my pushman. He told me we were gonna see movies together. We've been touring hospitals. Okay? I couldn't do it without him. I got other friends too, now. But what I'm saying, you can't be an island by yourself. You got to learn to work with the people, whether you like them or not. You know, the last one, I think this one probably is similar. Every one of us on the council had different social networks. We didn't socialize, but we got together. Not on everything, but the product of what we produced was pretty damn good. And before I got there, it was really good, it produced two major bridges before I showed up. Okay? So my point is, tonight, we're gonna vote for a mayor and we'll vote for a vice mayor. And the mayor should be the person that has the time, the energy, regardless of how long you've been here. Sure, I've been here 11 years now tonight. I have no ego left. I left that in the military. I earned enough credit and enough medals to satisfy me. My only ego says I'll do something to help this town. So for the people that thought I was gonna match up with Roger and we're gonna create a hell of a lot of friction, I apologize, I said, "Roger, I can't do that, Roger, because I know my body. And my body says you cannot be the mayor and do it right." So tonight, I would not want to be on a ballot to be voted for. Vice mayor, that's a different issue. I can probably handle that, supposing that I'm tough and I'm angry and angry and I get over this operation coming up. It's gonna, they're gonna refigure, it's like, I guess, if you wanna lose weight, they take your stomach, you turn it upside down and make it the size of your fist, you eat two hamburgers and you're done. Well, okay, I'll get through that, because I'm mean enough to get through that. Okay? And I'm coming back to serve the rest of my time. And then I'm going out to the pasture and probably be more of a pain in the neck than I am now. So I just wanted to explain to everybody here tonight and put it on TV where I'm coming from. And my son said, "He beat me up," but he never would do that. He said, "Dad, you're sick, you gotta get well." Yeah, that's what I said. So I hope you understand my position. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That would be hard to top. Okay, so if the council members would fill out their ballots. One of them both at once?
Okay. On the ballot for mayor, Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Sarah Aquino. Mayor Howell votes for Sarah Aquino. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Sarah Aquino. And Vice Mayor Aquino votes for Sarah Aquino. And Councilmember Gaylord abstained. So Sarah Aquino will be mayor for 2020. Congratulations. On the ballot for vice mayor, Mayor Aquino votes for Ernie Sheldon as vice mayor. Councilmember Sheldon votes for Ernie Sheldon as vice mayor. And Councilmember Howell votes for Ernie Sheldon as vice mayor. And Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Ernie Sheldon as vice mayor. And Councilmember Gaylord abstained. And Councilmember Gaylord votes for Ernie Sheldon as vice mayor.
Thank you both for your willingness to serve for next year. And thank you, all of you, who have supported me and Sarah over the course of 2019. So with that, we will move on to city manager reports.
Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Sheldon, I just, I told you this the other day, but I hold you in the highest regard. And I will never think of the creed of country, family and self again in the same way without thinking of you. So thank you all for, thank you very much for that reminder to all of us. I was very touched and honored and frankly heartbroken to attend the celebration of life for the passing of Sacramento City Fire Captain Tamara Thatcher yesterday with Fire Chief Rodriguez. It was a beautiful ceremony. It was a line-of-duty death. Learned that she was a first responder to the first responders, taking care of the behavioral and mental health challenges of her fellow firefighters and serving on a peer support, in a peer support program, and also took a special interest in mentoring young female firefighters. So I was just so pleased and honored to be there. And may she rest in peace and may all our thoughts and prayers be with her colleagues, both down in Sacramento and here in Folsom and elsewhere, and her family and friends. Santa Slay is visiting Folsom neighborhoods. Santa and Mrs. Claus have teamed up with the Folsom Fire and Police Departments to visit Folsom neighborhoods through December 12th. A convoy of emergency vehicles along with firefighters, police officers and city officials will escort Santa through the neighborhoods. Santa's elves will collect non-perishable canned goods to help stock the Twin Lakes Food Bank for the holidays. And you can find Santa's schedule and information at folsomsantatracker.com. Holiday Lights at the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary returns for the 10th year with even more seasonal cheer. Thousands of bright and colorful lights, sparkling ornaments and trees, lighted animal figures and displays transform the zoo sanctuary along with your holiday spirits. Santa Claus pays a visit, Santa Claus is busy, 'cause he's like a lot of different places. Santa Claus pays a visit each night of the event and local caroling groups and musicians fill the air with the merry sounds of the season. Wild Nights and Holiday Lights is open from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., December 13th through the 23rd, and again from the 26th and the 30th, weather permitting. We've already had to cancel one night because of that brutal thunder and rain the other night. Mascots from around the region visit the event on Sunday, December 15th, to greet guests and pose for photo ops. So that might be a special day if you're trying to pick your date.
Elaine, I had heard a rumor that it's recommended that people get their tickets in advance. Is that true?
Yeah, you can get your tickets online through the city's website. Through the Parks and Rec Department has a web track system. And I know from personal, I should know as city manager, but I showed up last year without a ticket and everybody else had their electronic ticket. And you know, so get it ahead of time, it speeds things up.
They didn't let you in, did they?
I did it on my phone and then I had my ticket. Relax and take a moment to focus on personal wellness this busy time of year. The Folsom Public Library and Folsom High School invite community members of all ages to attend a community wellness night at the Folsom Public Library on Tuesday, December 17th, from 6:00 to 7:45 p.m. The free event will feature guided meditation sessions, acoustic guitar music, student martial arts, well, that's a little different from the meditation sessions, and wellness organizations from the community. For more information, visit folsom.ca.us/library. Join the Folsom Public Library's Winter Reading Challenge now through January 31st. Get off of Netflix and pick up your Kindle or an actual book. Each age group, kids, teens and adults, has a chance to win a $25 Barnes &amp; Noble gift cards. Learn more at folsom.ca.us/library. The Teen Library Council presents It's a Wonderful Life, An Oldie But a Goodie, at the Teen Movie Night on Friday, December 13th at 6:00 p.m. This event is free and open to everyone ages 13 to 18. Pizza and snacks are available. The Holiday Party at the Senior Center celebrates the joy of the season. That's right next door here at City Hall. The festivities begin at 11:30 a.m., Friday, December 20th, and admission is free for ages 55 and better. Partygoers are encouraged to wear their most festive holiday sweater and may bring their own brown bag lunch. The Senior Center's very own off-key singers will provide musical entertainment, light refreshments and a raffle will be held. And finally, the annual Christmas tree recycling drop-off event will be on Saturday, January 4th. Trees will be accepted from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. down at Rodeo Park. And also, community organizations will collect trees throughout the city as part of their fundraising activities. And if it's worked the same way it's worked for the almost 30 years I've been here, you'll find a flyer on your door that will tell you when to put it out there. So please do that. Thank you.
Mike?
Now that I've been able to collect myself after your comments, Ernie, I just wanted to say a couple of nice things about you. Vice Mayor Sheldon was the first of the city leadership that I ever met when I moved to Folsom. And I encountered him because my two sons decided that they wanted to play junior Bulldogs football. And the, I think after they played for one year, the second year was the year that the astroturf was put in at the park over there. And Ernie was there prior to having been elected to the city council and methodically used that little yellow legal pad to rattle off the 100 or 120 people that were part of the effort to both prepare and fund and plan that park. And some of you are in this room. So thank you all for that, because football's never been quite the same ever since then, right? Here in Folsom. And it's become very popular with the people that are seeking political office to claim the title of a community organizer. Maybe rather than a bronze statue, the dictionary should actually say "community organizer" and have Ernie's picture in it. So thank you very much, Ernie. It's been a pleasure to watch and learn from you and serve alongside you. Thank you. That's all I have today.
Roger?
So I got my list up and I was gonna read it, but I wanna read it regardless. So if anyone doesn't know how much Ernie has done, you heard a lot today already, but there's some things that I found and I've known him for a long time and there's some things that I was shocked when I saw it. So one of them was, Ernie actually wrote Folsom's first master plan, Parks' master plan. Is that correct?
Together.
Together with, I mean, but you were essential within it, right?
Right.
He spearheaded planning, designing, construction, the Veterans Day memorial behind the library. He's been the executive director for the FAA, the Folsom Athletic Association, for the past 20 years. And in that capacity, raised over a million for Folsom recreational activities and facilities. He established the Youth Assistant Scholar Fund, which has provided 80,000 in scholarships and was instrumental in setting up the Limby Park snack bar concession stand that raised over $75,000 for youth groups. So some of the stuff that I've seen, that I've known, I've read more, just doing some history on them. And I just wanna say, I echo the same thing as Councilmember Kozlowski says. And your services, I mean, this city owes you a debt they can't pay. I don't even know what to say. You were the first council member to look at me and put your hand out and say, "All right, you're annoying, but let's get you involved." I stared at you on my rollerblades when I was this high at your park dedication. And at Economy Park, I sat behind you as you gave the keynote. And it was, it's an honor to be here. And yeah, I don't know what else to say about it, but thank you. So I appreciate your service, all right? And I don't believe it, you're not gonna be sitting down anywhere. You're gonna be raising hell everywhere you go. So the last thing I'll say is, I got to, had the pleasure of riding around with Santa last night. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the PO, Folsom POA and Folsom Police Department and Folsom Fire Department for everything they're doing in this community. I saw so many, and each stop, I think they did 20 stops last night, and there is way more people than I've ever seen before. So it's definitely amazing to see so many people give up all their time and effort to do something for the city. So thank you for that. And with that, Merry Christmas and we'll see you in January.
Just wanna thank my colleagues for their confidence in me. And Ernie, you are a gentleman and you are genuine and look forward to working with you and all of you. I hope that we can start the new year with a clean slate and put whatever differences we may have had behind us and work collaboratively and proactively to improve the quality of life in Folsom for all residents. So wish everybody a happy and a healthy holiday season and we'll see y'all in the new year. Thank you.
Okay, Ernie, you know I love you. Ernie Jr., just call and let me know and I'll get that mac and cheese over. Just reporting out on other regional commissions and committees, I already gave you the report on Regional SAM. That's the good news, that those other rates, $37, is not gonna be increased. STA is in fact considering Measure A, which is sales tax. That is gonna be discussed at our next meeting on Thursday afternoon. And recent update from Regional Transit is there was a presentation at the board meeting last evening about the double-tracking of RT along Folsom Boulevard. And by double-tracking, I mean the only place where a double-track, an actual second-track will exist is between Park Shore and Bidwell. That has been flying out of my head all day. So it's a relatively short section, but it's gonna allow increased frequency of light rail to every 15 minutes. It's also gonna include removing and replacing all of the existing signal and electrical equipment so that when the train is going along Folsom Boulevard, you know, all the lights turn red right now. That's not gonna happen anymore. So the traffic will be able to move east from us along Folsom Boulevard. And that is gonna be done in the early stages of the project. So the discussion at RT Board last night was the CEQA mitigated negative declaration. So the comment period, I think, is open until the 12th. So if anybody has any other comments, there was a few Folsom residents that went to that meeting last night. I'm not sure that they necessarily understood exactly what's involved in the project. So if anybody else has any other questions or comments about that, feel free to contact me. But the comment period, I believe, is still open until Thursday. So if you have any issues with that, that information needs to go to the RT Board. I don't know that I have anything else. We had somebody mention the traffic enforcement this morning. Despite the fact that I've been sitting here for 20 years, asking people to slow down, that the stop sign actually applies to you, as does the red light, as does you paying attention to the people that are roaming around, not necessarily in the easiest colors to see. It's the holidays, let's not have anybody else get their day or somebody else's day ruined with a ticket or an accident or anything else that results from not paying attention when you're driving. So please pay attention, have a safe and happy holiday season. Congratulations to both Sarah and Ernie. I'm looking forward to working with both of you in the coming year. And I'm looking forward to Ernie's health taking a big upswing in the positive direction. So with that, we do not meet again until January. And Sarah will be sitting in this seat. And I wish you all happy holidays and a happy new year and a better 2020 for all of us. With that, we are adjourned at 9:19.